They're given a lot of planning time.
Uh, so how did the
They're just like, they're in such great spirits.
I'm watching.
Yeah, yeah. That was really good to see. I was there for eight or nine to
They were able to buy certain that.
To three.
Uh huh.
And then I got one and I had to have to read my email. And so I I remembered that originally and forgot about coordinating that with someone or mine. And so I get home at like three and I sit up. My dream is we talk about it. I thought it was like mid Tuesday and um I But I shared. I don't know, sometimes I forget things. And then I start going through my mail and I read it. Oh god, the bus is getting here.
I'll tell you, that was the big thing.
Also, but I had four thirty because I was here at five six. So, so I see.
Nothing before that for sure. We're all
Really.
Yes.
Two steps. Oh.
Um, if we're all present? Gio, we're good to go? Fantastic. Uh, we will call tonight's meeting into order and entertain any motions.
I've moved that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiation pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Second. Any discussions?
He asked it second, I like that.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We expect to be in executive session till a little bit just before seven P M is our goal. Six forty-five. Fantastic, let's hear it about the court. Board of Wonder what that was.
No, this is from when I Oh, Brother I don't know.
Yeah, people, somebody just like scribbled I don't know who that is.
We're all here, we're all here present.
They ever set up
Alright, well, welcome back, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We are gonna um continue with our agenda. Um, are there any modifications to the agenda? I do not believe there is.
No, there is. It's been just your prayer.
Fantastic, hearing none, we'll keep proceeding. We'll move to agenda item four point one. And we do have someone signed up to speak for public comment.
We got Elizabeth Bergman.
Hi, can I come up here?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, I'm Elizabeth Bergman. Um, I am here um as a parent um and on behalf of also my husband. He, I am an educator and my husband works for Tonkins County and Protective Services. And I share that just to say that um we are very conscious of the fact that issues are complicated and contextual and nuanced and not easy. Um, we are the parents of two middle school age children in ICSD, both of whom were recently on a school bus um on which a threat of violence was made as reported on uh the twenty-second of November in the Ithaca Voice. Um, what I know about that particular incident uh I learned from my eleven and thirteen year old children um who witnessed some but not all of what transpired. Um, and I know through the article that was published in the Ithaca Voice. So I therefore acknowledge that um my understanding of the situation and the information that I have is incomplete and um that I received no direct communication from the school or school district and that I understand that that is complicated as well. Um, I'm not here to find fault or to point fingers or demand information about the particular situation um which is understandably sensitive and private in nature. Um, but I do want to just say a few things um that have sort of risen to the surface in my thinking as um this has uh transpired. First, I wanna express um my family's sincere gratitude to uh the Ithaca City School District's bus drivers and aides and uh teachers and social workers and guidance counselors and office staff, uh facilities and food service staff, principals and administrators, all of whom I know and trust to be people who work extremely hard, who do the best that they can with the resources that they have and um do it for the right reasons. Um. Second, um I wanna say um that we send our kids to school. We want to send our kids to school um with confidence that all district staff know clearly what to do when threats of violence are made or when violent acts are committed and uh with the confidence that they will be supported and clearly communicated with by administration and that administrators will be responsive to law enforcement who are seeking uh to assure that our school communities are safe and that Ithaca will not become the next Uvalde, Newtown, Cali Vine or any of the source of other communities where tragic gun violence has occurred in our schools. Uh, therefore, we respectfully ask for more transparency and clarity of communication from the Ithaca City School District Administration in an effort to restore our confidence that everything possible is being done to keep our school communities safe. And third, my hus- I uh just want to share that my husband and I strenuously object to a code of conduct that includes bringing weapons to school as a behavior to be managed at the school level. Uh, to be clear, we generally support restorative practices and responsive classrooms. Indeed, we've seen their value in our own children's experiences in the school. That said, there is a line to be drawn. And we draw that line decidedly before bringing weapons to school. Um, while we acknowledge that every situation is different uh and we do not support a strictly punitive approach to managing behavior, we feel strongly that we owe it to our students, our staff and our entire community to learn from the heartbreak of other tragedies, to take incidents of bringing weapons to school or threatening to bring weapons to school very seriously and to collaborate with and rely on law enforcement to help keep our school communities safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bergman. I don't see anyone else signing up. Um, so we'll move to board responses.
I'll offer a quick response of my colleagues. Um, Dr. Bergman, uh to the last point you made, um there uh New York State makes it exceptionally clear that there is no leeway that a student was to bring any disciple weapon. In fact, I believe there are a pretty exhaustive list in the appendants of the Code of Conduct that necessitates an automatic suspension. And so um ICSD um does not have a code of conduct that would allow that to take place. Uh, and we will continue to take a look at our safety plan um that was updated in January and we'll be reevaluating our safety plan as well in the next couple of meetings. Um, it'll probably be at a policy committee meeting to begin with, um but definitely will be in a public forum as well. And so um I can send you information. I can send you the links to both our current safety plan and the paragraph in question or the paragraphs that may be in question as well as our code of conduct in which I'm a reminder to our community, on December fifteenth, there is a public hearing on the code of conduct and we welcome any and all feedback on that as well. So yeah. Exactly what I said, December thirteenth. So the Tuesday before our um next board meeting will be the public hearing for uh the code of conduct.
The Tuesday. And the hearing will be before the meeting on that Tuesday. Just to clarify.
Thank you very much, Maury, I appreciate you. I know you were absolutely correct. Any additional?
Well, I'd like to say that um according to our um safety plan on page twenty-three, it does say communications to parents and guardians. So if we haven't done that, so that some sort of communication, because we should not be relying, I personally don't rely on the newspaper for any source of the update.
Website.
Website?
I don't think it's a newspaper.
Oh, right, right, that's true.
Like the only, it's the only, only communication I got aside from what I got from my preteen with my teenage child.
I, I think we all share your concerns and I think um I think what Sean was saying, I think we'd be even more explicit and say in response to the particular incident that you're describing, we'll be addressing some of those issues and in coping them into policy, so.
Very good.
No more board responses, we will move to our student reps. Uh, let's start with LACS because we have someone new joining us, is that worth?
Yeah.
I'm Stella.
I'm a tenth grader at LACS, so I'm, this one's best friend.
Yeah, we're, we're with yours, so yeah, I'm very happy to have her here. Uh, today we saw the electric buses, I'm assuming most of you guys did too. Uh, I think it's great to actually participate in equal action. And it was one of the things that was in the Great New Deal, which I think is fantastic that we're trying to push that forward. Um, I know there's, we're trying to get grants for two uh in the process, but I think that's super awesome. And to make a commitment to climate justice is something I'm always gonna appreciate. And I'm really happy that we're actually taking, taking the next steps. Um, kind of, this isn't strictly LACS related, but we're moving forward with the Sustainability Board, uh which is also part of the Great New Deal, uh me and another student, Sophia Shaw, which also does LACS. Uh, recently we had an ASM called Local Board, which talked about connecting with local agriculture um and kind of getting more involved with our local food. Um, this, we're talking about kind of multiple different ideas of maybe having a culinary class. Because a lot of the history of LACS is rooted in, we used to make our own soup, we just, we used to make our own salad. We've been very dedicated in our cafe to making it more involved with students and also just evolving from what we have already. Um, we have a project.
Yeah, um, we had a project, Last Cycle, um led by a few of our staff members that collaborated with the youth fund um in bringing fresh produce and using those ingredients to create a soup. Um, once a week, just on Thursdays, um that was available for any student would purchase school lunch. Um, because there is some issues with um, you know, not being able to compete with the already provided school lunch. Um, and that's something that we're hoping to continue to do in the future and working with other local farms to continue um localizing our projects.
And the ASM talked about essentially having a cooking class at like, or maybe a science class that focused on agriculture and incorporating it into our cafes during fourth period so that we can have it being served.
Um, we also recently had the end of first cycle, which means evals. Um, we have a really strong eval system, um at least I feel that way. Um, we use Nattyport, which is a website that one of our lovely science teachers designed, um that holds all of our evals. Um, yeah, I think everybody received evals back from all of their teachers and was able to communicate about any concerns they had.
Uh, we also brought back one, a kind of foundation of LACS morning meeting. Um, it's basically a ten minutes in between our first and second contact split during Thursdays. Um, this was led by two of our students. And any student could come up and make an announcement, either about fundraising, or like a school dance or maybe
Or a birthday.
Like a birthday announcement, uh just to try to bring the community together of, and also have better communication throughout the school. I mean, we're a community school, communications are the things that we focus on. And for the past three years, we haven't been able to have it because it just wasn't functioning right. Um, but we have brought it back and currently it's doing fantastic and students are very enthusiastic for having it back.
Yeah, um, Facing History is a very famous class at LACS um that we're both in right now and in the Middle East debates. Um, and for the first time with our new teacher, Rebecca Johnson, she's moving um towards the goal of having a D C trip to go to the Holocaust Museum um and possibly the African American Museum as well. Um, we've been doing a lot of work to figure out the details of that as well as how we're gonna raise funds for that. Um, one idea that we're moving forward with right now, we're both working on our speeches for it is um we were all assigned a person who contributed to the resistance um of the Nazi Party around World War Two. Um, some examples, Red Orchestra, Josephine Baker, um White Rose Party. And we are now have a fundraiser where we have parents, family members, et cetera come. Um, and we give these speeches and try and convince them to support us in the resistance of the Nazi Party.
Yes, incredibly. Uh, recently, we had a little bit of a scare of asbestos. Um, and thank you to Darren Bryman, you guys figured that out really quickly and we really appreciate this at school. Um, and really happy that we don't have asbestos. Um, but it did result in the LACS students having their Friday which was a little fun for us, but we're very happy there wasn't asbestos. Uh, if you all seriously had, I would outside that.
Yeah, um, as a basketball player, I really appreciated it. Um, I mean, I know it's more than the basketball court, but um for both the students that go to LACS and um any children who live in the surrounding area, it's a really great space for them to go, a really safe space for, to grow community. Um, so that's been really great to have, yeah.
That's LACS for the past like two weeks.
I have, sorry, I have one more thing actually. Um, as, as a student athlete, we have the um Scholar Athlete Council, I believe. Um, and just kind of a concern I have like as a captain um and not being able to get to those meetings, I just think that's something that we should work on, um accommodating for LACS, LACS athletes, even though I know there's very few. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. We'll move to Ithaca High School.
Uh, hi. We do have asbestos at Ithaca High School. Uh, it's taken care of, under control, but I think the CAFO project will take care of at least the parts that they touch, will be entirely redone and have that professionally removed. And Mr. Bryman also greatly agreed to come talk to us, just to know what it is. There's a lot of applications for why we can't get rid of it and how it's being safely managed, so thank you for that. And we, as we move cold months, heating is important. Although we are not without heat, some classes have it better than others. And some days, it seems like each classroom has a climate of its own. Um, Happid and Heat Club have started their annual food show. You can donate up until December twenty-first. Gio is running a student-led health test. Students can learn to troubleshoot and repair chrome, it's been earned credit for it. Chrome fits come from all of the schools and districts and students learn how to fix them during the university launch. This is an amazing opportunity for both the students and the district. It feeds the students valuable skills and saves the district lives.
Yeah, we also recently spoke to Mitch Trumbull about increasing support for student government and club officers who often have trouble organizing fundraisers and events due to the complicated paperwork and organizational guidelines that they have to navigate. Improving the system could involve an orientation for new class and club officers, improved handbook that has more information. Um, we've also been discussing the five dollar a year parking fee for the IHS parking lot and hope to either eliminate this fee altogether or ensure that there's more transparency about what it's used for. Um, we've also been working to improve homework policy and provide more resources for students who have missed school in the form of better canvas usage or fixed testing days. As students who miss even a day of school face um piled up homework and classwork that becomes difficult to address, which sometimes leads to students coming to school even when they feel sick. Um, we've also been in discussions with Mr. Bryman and Mr. Trumbull about activating RFID's and student IDs for better access to the school for students.
We students also attended the electric bus summer this evening and would like to share some brief thoughts on it. We loved the experience of being on a new and electric vehicle and how we were able to answer all of our questions. And we think it'd be a great idea to share and provide communication to the other students as well. If there are any plans to do web demos, we are excited to see the reactions of, of our peers. And we would also love to help out if there is anything we could communicate to the IHS Student Fund.
Um, today we met with Ms. Grover, Ms. Burke and Mr. Bradwell to continue our discussion regarding excused absences and mental health days. We found out there are various policies and state laws that need to be looked into more to implement this specific wording into our attendance policy. It is under general consensus that mental health days can fall under personal illness which are excused. So for now, we are hoping to increase awareness of this to parents, caregivers and students so that students can engage in appropriate self-care. But as we discussed with Ms. Grover and the others, we should look into this further before we take any specific actions, which I will hopefully soon. Um, our conversation further delved into mental health and we recognized the additions of new counselors and new social workers. But even with these new additions, students haven't been feeling the effects of these additional supports. To the general student knowledge, students need to make appointments ahead of time with their counselor or social worker, which might prevent students in crisis from getting the support they need. For now, we are looking to connect with our social services team at IHS regarding drop-in appointments and improved mental health support. Another topic discussed today was a continuation of our conversation and action of sexual harassment and assault at ICSD with Talcaut, Ms. Grover, Miss Day, the Advocacy Center and IHS students. We have some updates regarding this initiative. We shot a student-led informative video, shout out to Ava Thomas, that also includes our administration to increase awareness about district sexual harassment policies. We are planning to release this video in January. Um, during the summer, Lydia Dorr, a senior at LACS, and I interned at the Advocacy Center and created the I Support Survivors Toolkit. Um, this is a folder of informational posters and awareness stickers for school faculty and staff to learn how to better support survivors of sexual and relationship violence as well how to stand up, how to stand against this violence within the school environment. Um, working with Ms. Talcaut, this is a district-supported material and we are planning to present this in staff meeting in January and are eager to put up these posters and stickers for their messaging of support and accountability.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, IHS. Board, uh, board responses to our student reps.
Oh, just a question, activating the RFID, what is it, RFID on school ID, what does that do?
Yeah, so um currently doors at IHS are like, they lock and teachers can enter and exit with like their ID cards. But um, we can't do that with ours. I believe that there is like that functionality on our ID cards, it's just not activated. So yeah, we've been discussing activating those so that it can, it's easier for us to enter and exit during times when doors are locked, just like, cause doors lock five minutes after the school day ends, which is um a little bit of a hassle.
Other board responses.
I would be remiss if I didn't welcome Stella to
Yes.
uh official student rep role. And it's always good to hear about LACS and what you folks have going on. Please, as you start your fundraising, um let us know. We uh, we are, I would say generous, would love to spread the word and participate as much as possible. Um, you know, and I always defer to Eldred with his background, but there's always ways to raise money in this.
He's very generous.
Any additional responses from board members? Uh, I wanna thank the team at LACS for pushing the board and the district uh in a faster pace than we would normally have gone around electric buses. And we are guaranteed for two and possibly up to four depending, but at least two will be in the fleet and test them out. Yes, there'll be additional demo days, we had that conversation and we would love help and support as we have this conversation, it'll most likely happen in April. Uh, Karen had a really good suggestion to make that happen in April, so we'll, we'll follow up as the weather gets a little warmer as well. Um, I also love that basketball court at LACS. And so I'm glad that after five to six years of discussion and planning, we can actually see it and it's, it's there and it's the real deal. Um, the heat at IHS, it will continue to, um and other buildings as well. If you ever want more information, if you wanna learn about um our HVAC system, come to a facilities meeting, we'll be more than happy to tell you about all that we're trying to accomplish and make that happen. And uh thank you to the IHS student reps as well. Um, I never would have looked up the Senate bill, Senate Bill five six three, which is trying to change education law to uh make mental health and mental well-being days um part of excused absences. So it's currently in committee. So while we are having local conversations, there's an opportunity for us also to push at the state level. And Ithaca has done this a number of times where we have worked with our state legislature to try to have something happen for the entire state. And this could be one of those issues that we could do. And I look forward to having more conversations about what that can look like, who do we have conversations with? Um, and we can all do that together as well. So uh, that, that is uh fantastic. Thank you all for the educational innovations that, that were about, I appreciate it. With no other responses, we'll uh move to the consent agenda and uh entertain any motions.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Pat. Discussion, questions, conversation? Mr. Malcolm, I'd like you to put, put him on the spot, anything that we should know on the consent agenda from finances?
This is pretty uneventful, um, a little bit of money from IPI, um, sell till P T A dollars. Uh, just mentioned that the caption for the Treasury report, um, this is, it's from September. It's typically the lowest liquid cash month, but October, when we'll see next month, we'll see an increase because that um coincides with tax, tax collection. Um, and I always like to give a shout out because um just a small caption of the transactions that take part and what happens month to month um regarding our finances associated with this. If anyone ever has any questions, there's a snapshot, they're available.
I'll just add to that, that in our last meeting, we had a presentation by
Three plus one.
Three plus one, the group that manages
And fiscal advisors.
And fiscal advisors. They help us manage our cash on a day-to-day basis and as it's sitting there and we learn quite a bit about how often they are moving things around for our benefit. Been a pretty prescriptive, a narrow set, right, of New York State rules. You can't go in it all or what, but they are keeping us, um so they're ma- they're, they're making us money on money that typically would have been sitting there doing nothing. So that's kind of fantastic to hear. Um, something like
Something million, we actually
Eleven million, of course, I'm here.
They will be presenting to us, I believe in January, don't quote me. Um, so we'll hear more, they'll talk about, you know, they actually did a great trend graph to show, you know, where we were, how much money we've grown for cash flow for the district. Uh, and they will share the parameters based on New York State finance law that we can operate within as a school district.
That's it. Any other questions, comments from board members? All in favor? That is unanimous for the board members who are present. Uh, we will continue on with our agenda, our next item, uh we have the privilege of hearing from our superintendent, Dr. Brown.
Thanks for the time on the agenda, Professor. Uh, I wish to bring an update uh regarding a directive and a motion that was passed by the board on October the eleventh. And I'll read that, and I apologize for reading, but I want folks to hear what the board directed me to do on October the eleventh. And that was to provide the board with a recommendation for an independent analysis of ICSD And that was to provide the board with a recommendation for an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to Medicare-eligible retirees. This is to include a comprehensive survey offered to all retirees in order to gather data related to retiree healthcare coverage, experiences, and outcomes. Wow, I think they're gonna blast it, man. You know, I didn't, next time I may need them though.
We don't know how big it is on your eye, but
It's really big. Anyway, uh we've been, so tonight I wish to provide an update, but also foreshadow that more information will be coming at future meetings. First, uh we have identified a survey provider and folks may be familiar with K-12 Insight. They've been doing surveys for us for about a decade now. Um they have some experiences putting together uh surveys of similar nature. So we've looked at some, we have a draft survey we've looked at already. Um they're already one of our existing vendors. So we wish to recommend that we move forward with using K-12 Insight, a third-party vendor that can gather information in an anonymous way, but also allow for us to delineate between the different uh groups uh that we serve. So we would recommend that we use K-12 Insight, provide that survey, it'll be done online and with hopes that we can do that after the winter break. Secondly, there's other ones a little bit more complex and I may ask Mr. Van Kuren to help me out if needed. But uh we wish, we've identified uh with the help of our partners E&amp;B, some folks who could do some audits for us. The first one will be a savings audit and it's a gentleman named Theodore Butler, who will be able to do an audit of the savings that we have achieved or have not achieved as we move to switch to a Medicare supplemental plan. So we have identified someone who will come in and do an audit of the savings that we have achieved or not achieved um since we moved to the supplemental plan. That has been a question proposed. And then we've uh identified someone, Beacon Solutions, and that's not Dr. Matt Landau in Beacon, New York, but it's Beacon Solutions, who will be doing a denials audit. Uh and they will review to determine if preauthorization determinations are resorting in an abnormally high number of denials. And we've heard about that from folks too, that we may have a situation where we're denying too many claims. So an audit on savings, an audit on denials, and then an existing partner who has helped us develop a survey that will account for the bias that may be existing and other things, but a good survey to get a sense of what we're doing and what we're offering. And then again, I hope to have another conversation at that next meeting about some other options that we can offer to folks to uh move this thing along. So I hope this uh is uh welcomed by the board and if there are any questions or any other direction, please let 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 me know.
So let's see if there are any questions for Dr. Brown about this, since this was a response to a
Yeah.
a resolution that the board created. Board members, any questions for Dr. Brown about?
I've made healthcare that clear.
I think I think it's done silent for a minute and then we'll we'll get ourselves, yes, Q. Dr. Tr.
Clarification then, so when you're talking about other options um at at the next meeting or next meetings, you're not talking about additional surveys or or audits, you're talking about options that might be offered?
Yeah, some some options that may be offered to the folks who are currently uh on supplemental plan. Um
On the Medicare Advantage.
On the
Yes, yes, yes. Some options that, so we're working with our attorney, then I'll provide it now to see what we can offer them as an alternative to what they're currently using. So that, I I mentioned that briefly at the last meeting, uh we still working on that language and that possibly.
So in terms of the audits that you spoke of, um how quickly might they be set in motion and completed?
Mr. Van Kuren, we can, if you give us, if you give us a sense of how long it would take to do an audit, we can start these pretty soon, but how long?
Yeah, we can start them pretty soon. The audit related to the savings will probably run a little bit quicker than the audit related to uh denials, the information related to the denials. Um they have some barriers to obtain and that 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 it takes, it takes some time. But we can probably get both audits moving relatively quickly. The savings audit will be done. Uh you know, I don't want to give a date, but I should move pretty quickly through it.
Is the same true for the survey?
Yes, the survey should be very specific.
The survey that rolls out. Um we just look at the timing of surveys, and that's why I mentioned after the break, that maybe a better time to send that information out to folks where they would see issues in their inbox.
There's no questions?
Why after the break would be a better time?
We've, we've done survey before using this company and we've learned uh the the window of administration is important for responsibility. And right this time of year, people aren't paying as much attention to their survey. Their inbox is, they will be when we come back from break. So this is a timing beer. And also, we don't want to have it too close to what we typically do in the spring with our annual priority survey. So we don't want to do it in the March-April timeframe because we've done other surveys then and we don't want to do it right now because folks aren't paying as much attention.
So should we assume that we'll follow back up at the next board meeting? Wanted to see if if there's any more finite timeline for the audits as well as for the survey that we can let folks know and communicate with um our retirees
Yeah.
and have any other conversations that are necessary. Does that seem like a good plan for for the board? And um Mr. Van Kuren, we've had people come speak to us from our retirees. Have we communicated any of this with them or you're waiting to see how the board would respond?
We have not communicated this yet.
We can send a quick update with a nice one pager out to folks uh tomorrow.
I I I would be supportive of that, but I'm just curious about my board colleagues, right, that we should probably communicate
Absolutely.
as quickly as possible.
And on that one pager, will it have that we're gonna do the survey at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, we'll sort of push out the day. We can put a window, we can talk to our folks and confirm that window. For the administration, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Brown?
That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll keep moving.
Yeah.
Uh appreciate the update, appreciate the work from the team on this issue around retiree healthcare as well. And the more we communicate, the better. So we're looking forward to to what happens next. Uh I also know that we're blessed this evening with a special presentation. So uh I will, I said I was gonna stop talking and I haven't yet, so uh Glidira, I don't know if you're being joined by with Ms. Talcaut?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you all for for having us. I hope you all had a wonderful break as well. Never? So recruitment and retention update, um there you go. So in
Glidira, my apologies for interrupting. Um I know who you are, we know who you are.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
And I I don't want to introduce you right before everyone else. Would you please introduce yourself?
You know what? That is like, I'm so bad at that. Thank you. I'm Glidira Velazquez. I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources.
And I'm Willie Talcott. I get to serve as the Deputy Chief President of Support for your organization.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I like to jump right into it.
Correct, correct.
Um so a a recruitment update, um we've hired ninety-four educated new educators for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um fourteen of those educators are educators of color, identify as educators of color, um which puts us approximately sixteen percent of our new hires for this year are educators of color. Um we continue to be very intentional um in our uh approach and um our efforts to hire um educators of color. Um uh with with built, you know, going out into the community, um uh and I'll talk about some some efforts here um that we've been doing. Sorry. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Um so a big part of um recruiting are community connections. Um collaborating, one of the things I brought over, um which um a good community resource of mine provided me with um Cassie, Cassandra Pierre, who's at Cornell. Um and she's just a an awesome resource. Um and we work together a lot to do um like First Fridays. Um I've learned a lot from her. Um so thi- this is a diversity, diverse living in Ithaca um guide that she put together. And so I've been sharing that also with our um with our new hires, yeah. Um and and I also eventually want to tailor that for ICSD. A lot of it is Cornell. Um uh but it has just great resources. Um uh and so, you know, bringing, as we bring in new hires of color, really bringing them into the community throughout different events, um personalized communications, um offer letters. I try to get offer letters to our um new hires um as quickly as possible to really say, hey, we're serious about bringing you all in. Um these are the benefits, um uh salary, um really taking them out, having them meet different people. Advertising, that's that's an ongoing, really like thinking of how to better advertise. I think about that all the time. Cause um can we put, you know, best ads? We have um um radio ads, um uh Twitter. We're talking about doing different TikToks. So so that's an ongoing, um uh grow our own development. So those are some things as well. That's an a- an ongoing um in discussion, you know, how can we create a pipeline um of sophomore and juniors. Um as I went to different fairs, I met with a lot of freshmen, sophomores, and I was like, okay, they're great to put in the pipeline and then really target them and get get them in when they're ready. Um so yeah, dorm accommodation, that's another thing. That's um something that that we would like to develop. So another part of recruitment and retention that makes our recruitment and retention really um uh I would say um an up to uh a streamlined process is transitioning our onboarding to digital so that um we are really um making it an an effortless process. So when we, when we're, we're talking with someone recruiting them, we can also then say, okay, now um let's onboard you digitally. Um let's make the process effortless. Um so we are in the process of uh launching the digital onboarding and that's through Schoolfront. Um January is our target date and I'll be doing some uh, our Schoolfront, um we'll be doing the district administration training for that in December. Um also providing clear information about benefits. Um one of the actual um uh really good thing in collaboration with ITA that we've done is have an MOA in place that has allowed us to hire um uh teachers from out of state. Um and also our educators that are in the process of getting certified. Um whether that be um teaching assistants who are currently completing a certification um uh or are in a program to complete that leads to certification. Uh we have the MOA, that's Level A um and Level B uh right there. I I would love actually um that there be an additional benefit for teachers that are um you know, ideally, as I, as I'm very intentional in diversifying. If, you know, we're hiring rock stars that are out of state, um they were certified out of state. Um and you know, if that MOA could say, hey, they're certified out of state, we could pay them the same as te- as teachers. That's just, that's just my thought. Um but the fact that there is that MOA in place and has allowed us to hire these teachers has been a big benefit um for us. So it's that. Any questions so far?
Well, I had a question on um probably two slides back. What is dorm accommodation?
So in in um us thinking of sophomore, junior, summer internships, if we were to host summer, um sophomores and juniors, they would need somewhere to stay. So just thinking of, hey, could we use the dorms for that?
We have a
Yeah, so um I guess ninety-four educators is a lot that you hired. Um I was wondering how many more positions are vacant?
Yeah, great question. So we, right now are um, we have special ed um positions that we still need to fill. Um we also um uh let's see, we have a point five math position that's available. Um uh uh we have an English teach, uh I'm sorry, an elementary um position that just came available in um or is vacant in Cuyahoga Heights. Um and then I'm missing two other ones. So we have about, some of the special ed, we currently have, there's some uncertified um people into some special ed. Um I would say um and this is a approximate, we still have about fifteen vacancies, different old teachers. All right. And then this, um just to give you an idea of coming recruitment events, I am looking forward um to going to the recruitment events. Um uh we have the Cuyahoga Radio Job Fair in January. Um and then this list will change, but February, going to Utica College, St. Francis College, um Medgar Everett College. They have a new special ed program, so I really want to um connect there and get some um educators of college, um special ed. Um Poton College. Um then there's also the teacher recruitment days that are every year. Um and then the way they do it is by, so Buffalo area, Central area, and Rochester area. So those are the dates in March. Um and there will be other dates, April and May, that I'll recruit. I mean, yes, orientation and mentorship.
All right, so transitioning to talk a little bit more about some of the retention efforts and the professional development side of recruitment and retention, right? Glidira and Lynn Plankowski done an excellent job of overhauling our entire orientation process. So when we welcome new educators, there is a student-centered, uh really project-based, deeply connecting orientation that folks have engaged in, um and changing it up, I think, more and more and making it better and better every year um the last few years. So uh and we do an incredible student panel, which many new educators say is the most pivotal part of the orientation itself. Moira and Eldred were there last time and got to hear from this year, I think there were seven students, um the real range of experiences. And new educators asked fabulous questions around what do you wish I knew coming in, right? Um and what do you want to make sure that um pay attention to as we enter your your spaces and as your teachers, right? Um and we work with, we work with the ministries, we work with the village in order to identify students in order to serve them. This year, Glidira did an amazing job working with Equity Consulting Group and a couple of other fabulous administrators of color to create the um Welcome Back Educators of Color event. Um I think we were calling it a retreat for a while, right? But
Yes, we started out with a retreat and then realized that um a welcome back would be uh better, less, less pressure and then, you know, looking into eventually having a retreat, but just starting with, okay, let's welcome people, let's have a space.
And the focus this year was really on collaboration, connection, and also thinking about here and planning for here. I heard it was fabulous. What it seems like
It was a lot of fun, yes.
It was great.
Yeah.
Um and then the past couple of years, we've tried to be a lot more intentional around pairing new educators with their mentors. So every new educator, whether they're new to teaching or they're just new to the Ithaca City School District, get a year-long mentor. And they have to meet periodically. They give logs, they put it into the system. I ultimately approve their meetings, et cetera. Um and we know that connections in regard to identity are really important, right? So thinking about race, thinking about gender expression, um as opposed to just, you also teach seventh grade English, so I'm gonna be partnering with you. So we're trying to be a lot more intentional about those those pairings in order to really support more long-term connection and understanding that folks from marginalized communities, right, have traditional and marginalized identities, have different experiences in our Traditional and marginalized identities have different experiences in our school district. There's just a reality there, right? And so we know that we need to provide different kinds of support to differentiate that. And that mentorship connection can be really, really important. Uh continuing on, Glidira has done a fabulous job with both the staff of color connection, um a number of book studies that that folks have done on and expertly, and also running the administrators of color affinity group. We also have administrators who are white affinity groups as well, because we have different work that we have to do and then we also come together. Um we have some new teacher supports that are sort of newer this year, and I'm so sorry. I meant to tab those in a little bit further. So we now have new this year, we have buying monthly, they're optional, they're paid, right? Um new educator communities of practice. So administrators and other folks, other leaders in the district have signed up to meet a group of eight to ten educators who are new. And I'm working with all secondary people across different uh different disciplines. Um and I think there, you know, what, there's like ten different groups, right? Um and our focus is on supporting one another, supporting best practices around anti-racist teaching and supporting inclusive practices. And so it's really wide open, but it's been really nice to develop these these connections and again, provide another layer of support for people. Um and then the other new new teacher support is the the first three years. Um we presented about that before, Mary and I were here a couple of weeks ago to talk about it. And every new educator to the district is participating in the culturally and linguistically responsive micro-credential identity strand this weekend. So we've been really proud of that work and and are trying to continue on uh and continue to build that out so that there are substantive supports to help people do the work that we're expecting everybody to do, right? And they have community in order to learn, to fail, to figure it out together. So yeah, this is the time where you get to ask lots of questions.
Yeah, I have a question. So um like when in general, I guess, when like you have student panels, um like how are these students chosen, like do they volunteer or like, yeah, I just, I guess, how are students like selected for panels?
That's a great question. We definitely work with a number of, uh you know, we just kind of put the call out um to administrators who are working over the summer, since teachers aren't necessarily working um over the summer, to see if they know any students that they could recommend. But we also work with the Village at Ithaca, who works with kids year-round and um works with a lot of kiddos who may not have super great experiences with the school district, to be totally honest, right? So they may have uh they may have connected with the Village at Ithaca uh because of an issue around discipline or because they feel like they need advocacy in some way. Um and so that partnership has frankly been been strengthened and we've tried to find out, find different ways forward and find ways that the system and the people within the system can support kids more substantively. And I think it's important for us to include, especially to not just include, but to center the voices and experiences of those we've traditionally marginalized um as we're as we're thinking about how how we want to be, as Dr. Brown always says, of a school district. Do you want to join this year?
Uh I'm just wondering.
Because that'd be cool if you wanted to.
We're taking names, uh Mr. Harris.
I'm worried I got something to add, but um as uh Luli mentioned, both of us were there this summer to watch the student panel interact with our first year. Teachers who were gonna come on board and the notes I took away then have stayed in my, you know, front of mind. Just the two words, respect us and stop using this phrase resilience. We're more resilient than half of you will ever even understand. And I thought those are pretty profound insights to give onboarding teachers, right? And kids were out of it, they get disrespected in a lot of classes from their from their perspective. We didn't go into details about what that means, but but they were clear. And often times they feel disrespected by their teachers. And language is important. I don't know what language replaces resilience, perseverance, or thousands of adjectives, but they were clear. Call me resilient one more time, or ask me to show you my resilience one more time. And I thought those are profound insights. Great school.
So you said that the new teachers are participating in a culturally and linguistically responsive micro-credential identity. I was wondering what this looks like and how they are doing this.
I probably misspoke. Uh it is the culturally and linguistically responsive micro-credential, the identity strand. There's multiple strands.
Okay.
And one of them is around identity and understanding who we are as educators and how we show up in instructional spaces and also how we show up in our in the curriculum we design and support. And we, there are two other strands. Another is around family engagement and how we are supporting, interacting with, connecting with families, caregivers in order to support students. And so there's professional development around that. And then the other strand, they're essentially classes, right, or modules, right? Um and then the the third one is around anti-marginalization or anti-racist curriculum and pedagogy, which is the how of teaching, right? So there's writing curriculum and then receiving coaching on our instructional practices. So there's those three big strands, and they involve a series of, you know, reading, professional development, experience it, you know, in-person professional development, experience journaling, uh writing, et cetera. Does that help?
Yes, a lot.
Possibly.
Water, please.
So um what is the uh time element, time commitment for participating in the micro-credential?
Great question. And Mary, by the way, Mary Grover and Lisa Sahasrute, uh this is completely their, as we've we've talked about many a time, they're a free child and they're they're uh they've been leading this work extraordinarily well. Um so the time commitment, for example, for the um identity strand, so there's a series of nine uh one-hour workshops, correct?
Eight.
Hour and a half.
Thank you.
Eight hour and a half uh workshops. Um and uh right now, those are, um you know, offered as as after-school. Um and then we're also developing ones that are offered during the contract hours, of course, as well. Um and and then there's also reading and journaling that takes place outside of it. So there's there's paid, all the time is is compensated, right? There's a series of live service and professional development, right? And um we've been meeting, uh having a lot of collaborative discussions with the ITA president in order to make sure that we're doing it well and making sure that we're, you know, putting to work at the forefront and demonstrating that we value it and also making sure we're compensating educators appropriately.
I get, one reason that I asked about this is because I was thinking about it the other day. Um and I don't know whether uh everybody's aware of this, but um teachers who have provisional certification, if you're just beginning, you have to work on a master's degree and you have to get a master's degree within five years of when you begin teaching. And I just remember back to when I was working on that many, many years ago. Uh so I just wonder, is this something that um that is is problematic for those people who are also uh in a master's program, taking master's coursework?
Good question, definitely something to explore and talk more with new educators about. I know that the the feedback that we've received thus far is that it's been very valuable.
And it made very well, but this is also my experience. Be more valuable than the classes I took for my master's class.
I'm worried I'm sitting right here.
I never took classes with you.
Yeah, you can take classes with me, but I was like, like, some of them teaches master's classes, and they're tuitioned.
Some of the ones I took.
Uh so to follow up, I have a question to follow up on that. Well, dear, when you're making these um you're making your annual schedule of uh teacher programs that you're gonna visit, um is quality of student graduate something you factor in? In other words, how do we know, not not us, how do you know as professors in rich schools, get closer to the mark of what Sean is trying to do in his classroom, let's say, as opposed to someone else?
Yeah, that's a good question. I I do look at, you know, what their what their vision, what the school um is is looking for 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 most. Um but then also um on another on another end, I'm just really trying to go and see who's out there, you know, um in terms of of diverse students. Um you know, Suni Cortland last year, of Suni, not Suni Cortland, but you know, you go um you know, in terms of like uh who's graduating from the programs in diversity, then um yeah, it it wasn't diverse, so you know, in the teacher programs. Um uh and so just, you know, trying to trying to get as, you know, um to as many places as I can. Um Medgar Everett in in particular, you know, it's um uh they're building a special ed program. Um it's pretty new, but most of their um students are students of color. Um so so I, you know, it's 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 um it's both, you know. I'm looking at what is the program, what 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 does the school stand for? But then also um how can I connect with as many students uh so that we can either bring them in, recruit them uh for the following year or put them in a pipeline and and create connections.
We have any role to play in terms of pipeline management to
I'm sorry, repeat.
Do we have any role to play in terms of pipeline management to suggest, convince, cajole, support?
Absolutely.
And compensate our students to go into these programs?
Yeah, um I I think, you know, that's that's something that we're um uh really having more conversations about is what are we offering, um and what are the um uh what are what are we putting in place that then will allow for that pipeline to grow grow our own? Um uh and that's something that's developing.
I think we're going to Aspiring Educators.
Inspiring Educated Program, taking donations to that.
Yeah.
How many kids we got in that now?
Uh we, uh two right now.
Because some grabbed.
Yeah, and and a tad, so we have to rebuild the program.
And those kids went on to, we call it aspiring educators, probably aspiring educators.
Let's get, let's have another session on that.
All right. All right.
Yeah.
I know we have mentors that they that the new hires get. Um is there a check-in process so we can tweak it and adjust things um to serve them so folks don't get burnt out or frustrated? Is there a mechanism in place for us to catch them and support them as they go through this journey?
Yes.
You want to go?
Yes, you go.
Um so from a from a central office perspective, um the new educators of are the communities of practice for new educators, that's it, that's one checkpoint, right? So we'll we have um some additional support there. Um and then obviously building leaders, right, to have that, I think, that constant connection with new educators as well. Um and then I'll let Glidira talk, because we were to actually talk, we've been talking a lot about how other ways in order to to guide um even beyond what we have in place now.
Yeah, so I I, you know, with with some um some of our new hires actually have like monthly check-ins. So go to the buildings and you check in, um especially with the MOA in place where we have some, like I said, we have some rock stars who are working on um uh they may might have out-of-state certification. Um and and um this MOA has allowed us to hire them, but there's the bureaucracy of certification. So really checking in and saying, okay, um where are you at with this and what can I do to help? Um sometimes it's like, you know, they're they're um they're busy working in the classroom, so if I can, you know, pull something from the website and say, oh, wait, I found it, this is what you need to do. Um so doing those monthly check-ins, but then also having um like quarterly check-ins with all of our um new teachers to see, okay, what do you need? Um and that's something that I continue to tweak every year to see what is a good system for that. Um uh you know, um as a whole, but then also, you know, on a equity standpoint, I do zone in on 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 our our new new educators of color. Um you know, even meeting with those in the pipeline of um career professionals who want to be um teachers. Um so there's a lot of that and really like trying to tweak it to see what's the best um way to then um be sustainable and continue it year year on. I don't have that input set, so.
I think one of the other things we were talking about is trying to differentiate the kind, the support that people want. Um so I've been trying
Because it's individually based as well.
Right, right. Because some models that we've tried in the past, you know, haven't necessarily worked, you know, just like visiting foes periodically, you know, unannounced or something has not worked for Yeah, um so try, we're trying to be responsive.
And we know there's, you know, a lot of different factors to retain folks who are who are in a place, you know, even if you intentionally want to be in Ithaca, if you're far from home, if you, you know, have a spouse or a partner that has a different career track. So how do we navigate those things and work with the people we're trying to retain?
Karen, was I overzealous in saying we're
Uh no, I did. Um you said sixteen percent of um new educators this year are educators of color. How is that compared to the student body? Like what percentage? Because I I was on a um our hiring committee years ago and we had a good breakdown of percentage of what we need to achieve to represent our student body.
Yeah, we're not there. Yeah, um so you know, looking at our twenty twenty-two demographic data um for for the student body, we're closer to thirty-five, thirty-six of color, multiracial, Asian, Black, Latino, and Native American.
On your um your recruitment trips, uh who goes? You go, other people, the reunion?
Yeah, I I've been going, I um have also Delisa, who recently joined, um joined us, had joined me on some um and um and then I've also put an invitation out if there is anyone interested in joining me. Um yeah, I'd be ha- happy uh to to set that, you know, set up whatever um arrangements. I think um especially having like a a teacher with me or, you know, um uh depending on the school too, if they're alumni, um that's always great. So yeah, that invitation is out there if anyone does want to join me.
Uh two quick things. One, for the community to know that New York State keeps a fairly up-to-date report card of any district or any public school in the state where you can find demographic information and things of that nature. It's not always the most accurate, so I want to be careful about that. But for people who are looking for demographic information about Ithaca, um you can go there and find it. Um Glidira, you are, as usual and as typical, being humble in terms of the work that you do, the community connections you made. Um I also attended the Welcome Back uh event that happens, and I know you were partnering with folks at Ithaca College as well as other community organizations. Um and it was phenomenal, except asking me to dance at four o'clock in the afternoon. I was not appreciative of that. Uh but the DJ was great, right? But the DJ was great, right? The food was amazing. I know as a number of board members and folks who've been around a long time that we have been having conversations about re-instituting. I know you've already been a part of these conversations, about trying to find ways to re-institute what at that time we were calling the pathways to teaching. So helping to financially support teaching assistants to be able to complete their degree. For the community as well, who may know this in the field, but in the field of education that has changed so drastically that juniors are now signing contracts for school districts, right? Before they're even done with completion of their certification, they have a job waiting for them. So the work that you're doing to try to get out ahead is so essential to the, the work that, that we're doing. And I'm just very appreciative that we're trying to be innovative and creative and understand that it's, it's a difficult market to be able to recruit folks to our community and not normally because of the reasons that people think, right? That people do want to live here, right? That's not the, that's not the concern. The concern is what's the quality of life and what's going to be the experience in the building that I'm in? So just greatly appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you very much. Additional questions from board members or our student reps? Fantastic. Thank you all greatly, greatly appreciate it. We will move on to school district business. There are two relatively short items. We'll find out. I know I just, I didn't do the right thing. I apologize. The first is a update of policy 6150. This is budget transfers, excuse me. This has gone through the policy committee. I was not there, but the policy committee, if I'm not mistaken, approved at the discretion of the finance committee.
Yes.
And the finance committee then reviewed it as well.
Reviewed it and wanted to bring it to the full board.
So our process for policies is to approve a first reading, send it back for any corrections, additions, and then bring it back to the board for a second reading and adoption at that time. And so before we have any discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept policy 6150, budget transfers for first reading.
Second. Moved by Pat, seconded by Chris. Any conversations, questions, discussions about this policy? And I think we can put it simply that we are simply raising the amount at the recommendation of our auditors. Is that fair, Amanda?
Yes, and just daily practice. Since 2007, the cost of funding has gone up and the cost of doing business has gone up. So it was $3,000 that we would have to get approval in the moment from the board. Now we're asking for $10,000 and then we will always let you know, right?
We're always.
Transfers are always on the treasure report. It just gives us a little more latitude.
Questions, discussions, concerns? All in favor of a first reading?
Are we going to read it?
Uh, we normally do not read the full policy. Oftentimes our policies could be 16 to 20 pages.
So why do we say first reading? Individually, we each just have to read.
Yes, that's, it's a misnomer. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll, we'll figure out a different way of reading. A first review, how's that? Uh, I missed it. All in favor? That is unanimous for folks who are here. We will send it back to the policy committee and then we will bring it back to the full board as well. And then we have item 12.2, a resolution to appoint a records management officer, an asbestos designee. We had on our last agenda item, we had recognition of the decades of committed service of Paul Alexander, who was previously in this role. And now this is to appoint Sidney Wade to serve in this capacity.
As a records manager and Heather Williams as asbestos designee.
Thank you very much.
I move to appoint Sidney Wade as the records management officer and Heather Williams as the asbestos designee a Hera of the Ithaca City School District.
Second.
Questions, comments? Discussion?
I'm going to use some formality, but this is, we have to have these folks in place and.
This is usually covered during the reorganization meeting every July where the, where folks are appointed. We find ourselves where we have to reappoint somebody different than the rules. Yes, Amanda?
Moira, I think I might be able to read your mind. So that third part is an update of the, of the title because when Paul Alexander had authorities for the capital project, he had a different title than the title that Heather Williams has.
Right.
So that is just an update to the title of the position that would have the authority for using allocations, right?
So what I'm looking at is, it looks like it's a totally separate resolution than the appointment. That there's a second rev- resolution, well, actually three resolutions. One for Sidney's appointment, one for Heather's appointment, and then one for the limits of authority related to the 2019 capital project.
They cannot be moved at the same time?
All right.
They are separate, they, they belong to different, from areas A of the annual meeting and then B of the capital.
Correct. So Pat actually only moved the first two. So we need us.
Well, then why don't, why don't, why don't we treat them separately? Why don't we do the first two, then go into the next one afterwards? So all in favor of the appointment of Sidney Wade as the school business executive and Heather Williams as the asbestos designee? That's a table on the question, table on the, question on the floor. I'll get it right today.
It's on the table, it's on the floor, it's on the wall.
So that passes unanimously. And now thank you, Pat, or, thank you, Moira.
Okay. I'll move that the Board of Education adopts the following limits of authority related to the 2019 capital proj- capital project authorized by the voters on May 21st, 2019. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff.
So Amanda, you speak this again, just to make sure we have a clear separation of.
Absolutely. And for those of you that have lived through capital projects in years past, there are times when we discover items that we did not anticipate or that things need to be added or changed. And so these are thresholds of authority for staff who are dedicated to the capital project to be able to make decisions at certain levels. And then a description of when we bring additional thresholds to the Board of Education for a decision. It really is about communication flow, empowering the staff that are sort of in the moment, right, to be able to have that authority and not delay for a month or two for decisions that are just really part of the general work. I think that Dr. Eversley Bradwell can speak also to the fact that we have not been bringing a lot of change orders forward because of the excellent planning of both Tetra Tech and campus construction on this particular project from 2019.
It, it, it's almost surreal, the lack of change orders compared to our last project.
However, I think we're all, we've been doing this long enough to know that theoretically, one will run into an asbestos payment issue. And those are very serious. Oftentimes, the expense can go way above $10,000. It has to be done yesterday, so I get that.
So I did hear that it was moved. I did not, I didn't, apologies, I didn't catch who seconded it.
Seconded.
It was seconded by Chris. Any other questions, concerns, discussion from, from the board?
COO, is that, that's Amanda, that's you, right? Making sure I have the name right?
All in favor? That is unanimous for the board members that are here as well. I am going to stop myself from talking. We don't have any other business to attend to. And we have listed here the upcoming dates of importance and.
The human resources work session is not happening next Tuesday, so.
Policy will still happen and folks could please come join us to continue to wordsmith the number of our policies. We would greatly appreciate it. With that, we will bring the meeting to a close. Thank everybody for your time and your patience.